As I said earlier, in the evening everyone, my colleagues and I welcome you to the Subcommittee hearing of Police Reform and its number one. As we have stated in the past hearings, I want to first commend my colleagues, our chairmen, the unionists, and each member of the Subcommittee, who has shared their experience throughout the city of Chicago. I also want to commend our director of justice and members, taking place in most and not all of these hearings. And finally, I want to thank each and every one of you who are here this evening, as all of the last prior hearings provided for your testimony. I also want to thank the Police Accountability Task Force, who has recommended the changes and has helped us to follow in the process. And I'm going to let Alderman speak, I may have mattered, but before I do, I'm going to ask our Subcommittee chairmen for this hearing, down in the arena, the chairman of the 42th Board, please.
This is our fifth hearing, as was mentioned. We have additional seven members in at City Council, uh, City Council chambers, Wednesday at 29:00 or 10:00 a.m. Danny will be back for testimony on the results of his become a board of directors. The City Council considers that the options that are open now are those of the previous. As an official, I think I call this a very ideal, efficient meeting of matters. My goal tonight is to run webinars with citizens of Chicago, for the first or third, first such events, in the Chicago Police Department, from the extraordinary work of the sheriff and the deputy, and the district attorney, all of whom are here this time. As mentioned, this meeting is a City Council hearing, being recorded by a reporter, a transcript, and a commentary from the public. Furthermore, we need to celebrate the summer report, uh, from the series of meetings, of course, in three. The forum here is for people to pause for a debate, if they know what their opinions are. We're not going to take questions, and we need to manage the background. Many are processing right now, so the fact that the way it's going is starting out, there's a computer group reporting that, to put that into the midst of the various hearings, where we're aware of it. If you'd like to speak today, there are papers at the table outside, if you have any further need, or if you'd like to speak, and if you have a sign on the screen, you have a better time, please go back and get them, and make sure they're included in the recording. Please sit for about forty minutes, a little time. The sergeant orders for president, my side of all the rules, to hold up the board at one minute, thirty seconds, and then run, and then end with one. At that point, we'll have to call off the night, for a rule that can stop us from staying this, uh, so that everybody in the hearing can speak in the time that we have tonight. And we're welcome to the 48th hearing. Please respect our comments, avoid missing language, you might hear from anyone. If you're not comfortable receiving, you can also submit, uh, your comments and writing, and then you enter to the record as well. For our handles, if you hear it out, if I have your address, but, uh, the people are taking yours to City of Chicago dot org slash police hearings. It's my opinion that a few words of community, uh, obviously, when you can list that show up, uh, no other matters are as good as current reporting. The way that show is only has only sixteen years, is a wide, uh, for the comments of both, the hearing, and the listening part. Danny, that would be the highest of all, that being of all citizens and residents, representing the behavior, uh, which is a place to look more attention at. If I was to see that, I have two or three of the chairs, and he is all seen. We have to do that.
They're worse.
We have to see if we're not gathered to do it.
They can't move that right, because other minds are going to, too.
Then we're going to need to be secure, and then we're going to be able to, uh, to protect each other, and our citizens, and our families. We're going to have to, uh, the rest of the city, uh, and the government, and the citizens, and our friends.
Nancy Capolto and then David Sartori. David Sartori.
Good evening. Last Friday, I faxed and or emailed to Alderman, Munoz and Arenas Office, a three-page letter detailing my experience with IPRA and Internal Affairs. Very frustrating, very disappointed, and I'm just gonna simply ask at this time that you enter that letter into the record if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, let me see if that we ordered that into the record. David Sartori and Sarah Ortiz.
David Sartori, um, let's see. I think we want to sort of define or look into that word accountability. Um, let's see. Whoever signs off on the final investigation is the one that's accountable. And as long as that's not someone from the Chicago Police Department Internal Affairs Division like a sergeant or lieutenant, then the person that's held accountable, the most he ha- we want to look at what the, what's the most he has to lose? And if, in the last 10 years, the IPRA, fifteen years IPRA's had 10 different leaders, then, uh, you know, someone's given up short-term. If it's a sergeant or lieutenant, who incidentally, sergeants and lieutenants are the ones who are teaching the police officers on the street, on the job, how to do their job, they, they're, they never come up, they're not responsible for anything. If Internal Affairs handled the initial investigations and a sergeant or lieutenant had to sign off on the conclusion, and that way if it's a cover-up, cover-up, then they are the ones who have just gambled their 20 years of pension.
Right.
Uh, more specifically, if the complaint you make goes to IPRA instead of Internal Affairs, which is how everything is set up now, you don't even know who it is in Internal Affairs that looked at it. When your initial complaint goes to IPRA, once the thing is done, you can't take it to state's attorneys, the state police, you can't take it to federal court civilly or criminally because they've already been exonerated by IPRA. All you can do is complain about something like IPRA, whether it's a CPAC or an IPRA, it's the same. It's a matter of what do they have to lose? The ones with the most to lose would be the sergeants and lieutenants who also are training these people. So if the first investigation is handled by Internal Affairs, then you've got some solutions. They are always gonna get to whoever's in charge and overseeing this stuff, they're always gonna get to them. Whether they just take the job until they get caught and look for another job, it, it's not solving anything. And some of the problems with IPRA are, number one, as I said, the turnover in the leadership has been tenfold in like 15 years. Another problem is that when the person comes to your door to, uh, as the investigator against your complaint, he's probably, in my experience, 40 times, he's gonna be a Chicago police officer. He's somehow deputized by IPRA so that the records show IPRA's handling everything, even when it still is the Chicago police that are handling it. And then another catch to the system they're using now is, when you call in to make your complaint, you might talk for 10 minutes what happened, and they're only allowed 200 spaces to put it into the computer. So they're picking out 20 words out of your 2,000 or 200 words, and they're just deciding that's what your complaint is. Then when the police officer comes to your door, he says you have to sign the affidavit swearing that it's true or else it's perjury, and when you say, but it doesn't say anything on the affidavit, it's blank, just my signature. And, uh, you ask if you can see the complaint, they won't let you see it. And when you say you can't sign it unless you see what they wrote down as the complaint, then they tell you that, um, then that means you're dropping your case. You'll see a lot of cases that are dropped, and that's part of the system. The system is gonna be set up so that you lose. So the best you can hope for is the person who signs off on the investigation is someone with a lot to lose. 20 years experi- 20 years seniority on the police department like a sergeant or lieutenant has, that would be the place to start. Thank you.
Uh, yes, yes.
Sarah Ortiz and then Carla Velasco. Carla Velasco. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Ortiz.
Okay, uh, my name is Sarah, and it's pertaining to my son, William. Uh, he has been incarcerated. We knew the cop. He was a detective, and merely because he won, worked for him as an undercover, he placed him on a murder case. Within the, while he was in jail, he was supposed to help him, instead, he let him further on, um, becoming, um, the murder victim, let's say. And so he's been in there 20 years, and I couldn't find a lawyer, I couldn't find anyone that would help him. I went to the governor, the mayor, everything in detail, no one would help. I finally bumped into a friend, uh, and then met up with Bertha, and, uh, I came to learn about CPAC, and CPAC is a wonderful organization. It helps you, it helps the people that are in need, it helps the mothers that have children incarcerated, it helps mothers that have their children killed by these crooked cops. I don't understand why cops are, uh, doing wrong. They weren't like that when I was young. I used to be proud to be next to a cop. I felt proud. Now it's like, here they come. And, and, and they, they love, I noticed they love children, little children, but when it comes to teenagers, I don't know what is it, that they hate teenagers. So I find that they have created, um, prisons out in the doom box somewhere, and families out there, they need jobs. So they use our children to place them on crookedness, murder charges that weren't even sold and such, so they can have a job for tomorrow. So my son has been in jail for 20, 20, 21 years old. Guards, prisoners all say, why are you here? Cause he doesn't belong there. He's a, he's a child of God. He doesn't belong there, but he was with, ooh, my dear. But he was, we have, we met up with this one, and everything has been downhill ever since. Now he's in court, been in court for two years, it's like a game. And nothing is serious. All hell is breaking loose in the world. The way man is creating is the way the world is turning. So when the floods start coming this way, then you'll know and realize that man is doing wrong. It's the opposite of what God has created in this world. And that is that.
Carla Velasco and then Anderson Chavez.
Hi, my name is Carla Velasco, and I represent, I'm part of the 31st War, but I also represent Poston Alliance. And I feel like the facts are clear. We already know what the problem is, and it's not the people, it's the racist police. So it's time for Alderman, for the mayor, for everyone to start listening to us because the revolution is not gonna wait. We're here, there's people who have been supporting this for a long time. CPAC is the solution, it needs to happen now. Thank you.
Next up is Anderson Chavez and then, I think it's Camisha Jones.
Camisha.
Camisha Jones.
Hey, my name is Anderson Chavez. I'm representing myself, but I'm in solidarity with the Blue Lives Light Coalition, uh, solidarity with CPAC, and in solidarity with all the black and brown people that these fascist pigs have killed so far. So, it, like Carla has said, like so many people before me that came up here have already said, this is not something that's new, this is not something that we need to figure out what the issue is. No, the issue is there. These police officers, they're killing people, they're breaking the law, they're breaking their own laws on a daily basis. And I say their own laws because they try to make it seem like, like these laws, which are changing constantly, are laws that we have to follow by force, but we're not paying attention about the people that are enforcing these laws, whether or not they're following them. They're not following their own laws. They're killing us on a daily basis. Alright, look up, Home and Square, if y'all haven't even looked into that, what's going on in your own city. There's a building in, in the Home and Square neighborhood, right, that is completely illegal. They're taking teenagers in there and torturing them and doing all types of stuff to them. Somebody has already died in there, it's been going on for a really, really long time. And y'all sitting here pretending like we gotta figure out what the issue is? John Burgs, you don't know about John Burgs? John Burgs, the, the police chief, uh, in, in the Chicago Police Department that was torturing people for over 20 years. We found out, everybody found out about it, everybody knows about it, but he's not in jail right now, he's not in prison right now, and the people that he forced to confess to murders that they never did, they're still in prison right now? Why is he doing it on vacation? So y'all, y'all want oversight. You want us to keep looking at the police. We're looking at the police. You're the only ones that are not looking. We're looking at the police. So, real talk. So if you, if you look at, look at the police and start paying attention to what's going on, start thinking about the stuff that I just mentioned to you, the few cases of all the laws that these police officers are breaking, right, these are things that came out publicly, the stuff that happens on a daily basis, you're not looking at it because you're not in our communities. Alright, so that's, that's what we need, right? CPAC, we need accountability. We don't need to look at the police. When these videos come out, when these videos come out, we don't even watch them. We don't even watch these videos no more. We don't need to watch them. I look out my window and see what the police are doing. Alright? We don't need to, we don't need no oversight. We need accountability, and we're not gonna get accountability by looking at the police. I could look at those police officers up there right now. I have no power. I have no power to hold them accountable if they shoot somebody right now. Okay? And unless there's a video, we, they might not even, might, something might not even happen to them. And the person, if they survive, the person that got shot, he's probably gonna get charged with aggravated battery or resisting arrest, right? Because that's how they get out of their, that's, that's how they get out, get away with what they're doing. Okay? So we need CPAC, and y'all need to start paying more attention to what's going on in your city.
Camisha Jones and then Max Sukar. Our call address by, by my name is Hannah, or Max Sukar. Uh, Ms. Jones, go ahead.
Good evening. Um, my name is Camisha Jones, and I'm a part of the Blue Lives Light Collaborative. I know a few of you all have heard of us, if not just a few minutes ago, but, uh, we are a group of over 30 organizations who are, um, opposed to the introduction of ordinance 4878, which would provide hate crimes protections to police officers. Um, we have sent every Alderman, everyone on this stage, a letter beginning today, um, asking them where they stand on this issue, and I'm gonna read that letter right now. "We, the undersigned organizations, urge you to support our call to rescind ordinance 4878 sponsored by Alderman Edward Burke in the Public Safety Committee of Chicago City Council, also known, also known as the Blue Lives Matter Bill. As proposed, ordinance 4878 would expand the hate crime statute to cover current and foreign, for, former law enforcement officers and first responder personnel. This ordinance is a direct violation of our First Amendment right, a complete unnecessary addition, given already existing laws and a damaging precedent for the original intent of hate crime statute. The Blue Lives Matter ordinance wrongfully suggests that every commu- community member vulnerable to an accidental scuffle with the police at a crowded protest is the same as a sniper on a rooftop. If Blue Lives Matter is passed, the justified animosity or hostility often involved in exercising one's First Amendment rights to protest police will be labeled a hate crime, punishable by six months imprisonment or a $2,500 fine. We believe this ordinance cannot deliver increased protection or safety to anyone, but is likely to result in derailing First Amendment protections, suppressing political dissent, and hindering pathways to police accountability in Chicago. We know that law enforcement officials are some of the most protected public servants in the country. Police officers, community policing volunteers, firemen, private security officers, and even emergency management workers and emergency medical technicians are already protected under provisions 720 Illinois' compiled statutes 512-2. These laws classify any remotely physical interaction with the officer automatically as aggravated assault, which at minimum is deemed at a Class A misdemeanor. Penalties associated with this crime specify at length in 730 Illinois' compiled statutes 5-4.5-55 involve more than six months imprisonment or a $2,500 fine. This renders any additional attempt to make officers a protected class redundant at best and a gross waste of taxpayer resources and dollars. Hate crimes legislation is supposed to protect people like me, historically marginalized groups that could face violence because of their immutable characteristics. The Blue Lives Matter ordinance seeks to trivialize the vulnerability of these communities with a dangerous precedent. Furthermore, our city is in no position to exasperate the standing of our hate crime statute. At present, Chicago Police Department Silver Rice Unit, which management municipal hate crimes complaint is undergoing an investigation by the U.S. Department of Justice. There are over 30 organizations, I repeat, 30 organizations that are opposed to the proposal of this ordinance, ordinance 4878, and we demand that it be rescinded immediately, and we demand that you, Alderman Ravoras, make a statement to rescind that that proposal even be submitted into the Public Safety Committee of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, Max Sukar and then Matt, Madison?
My name is Max Sukar, and I'm an attorney with the National Lawyers Guild, and the National Lawyers Guild issued a statement today that was endorsed by seven organizations that is solidarity with the Blue Lives Light Collaborative against the proposed ordinance to add police as protected class in the hate crime law. And we oppose this ordinance, and a lot of other speakers have spoken about this, we're one of the 30 organizations that has endorsed the Blue Lives Light Collaborative that's pushing back against this appalling initiative. And as attorneys, particularly criminal defense attorneys and other attorneys that are in court every day, we see the balance of power, and we see how this plays out in court every day. We see and understand how much power the police have, how much credibility judges, courts, and juries give their testimony against unarmed people that they're arresting or brutalizing. Um, and, and we believe that this ordinance would only add heightened protections to a already powerful and overly protected, uh, class of people, and it's a slap in the face against those people, the LGBT community, uh, people of color and other communities who have been, uh, criminalized and are continuing to be criminalized by their very existence. Um, and so, um, I'm going to not read from this letter, but I'm going to, uh, hand it over to you all to be entered into evidence, and we would urge the immediate rescinding of the, um, of this proposed ordinance, and we also are here in solidarity with CPAC as well.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Max Sukar. Uh, Matt?
Mattson, yeah.
And then, uh, friends, Lucas. You're here, please, uh, ladies.
Hi, um, good evening. My name is Nat Madison. I am with the organization Nurses for Social Justice. Uh, we are among many of the organizations that are in solidarity with Blue Lives, Blue Lives Lives Collective, Collaborative in opposing the introduction of, uh, 4878, also known as the Blue Lives Matter Ordinance. Um, I am a registered nurse. I work, uh, as a public health nurse in West Side communities, and, um, I work with, uh, mostly black and brown clients, uh, who are living with mental illness, and I have, can't tell you how many times I've come across a situation where, uh, like I have to help my people, um, navigate emergencies, violence, um, you know, serious, uh, situations. Um, and it becomes really difficult when I'm working with people who have directly experienced police violence, and, you know, there's somebody who, uh, whose voices are telling them to do something very harmful, and, um, I'm supposed to tell them to call 911, um, knowing full well that there's all this trauma, uh, around the possibility that that 911 call is gonna bring somebody to their doorstep that's going to result in their loved ones dying, um, because they've experienced this in the past, or known people who have experienced this. Um, and I wanna kinda ask everybody here, um, how am I supposed to do my job when the accountability systems in this city, um, make it so that I can't trust the sim- my emergency systems that are supposed to help me, help my patients navigate the situations in their lives, whether it be a heart attack, or psychosis, or violence? A saying, um, a saying that a lot of us in the Nurses for Social Justice, uh, throw around a lot is that you can't put a Band-Aid on a massive hemorrhaging wound. Uh, and I feel like, um, some of the things that are happening in these communities feel like a massive hemorrhaging wound that we're trying to fix with a little bit of accountability, or a little bit of oversight, I should say. Um, definitely in solidarity with the folks that are talking about CPAC here, I think, an ordinance, and, and I'm sure that my fellow nurses would agree with me, that an ordinance that gives real power to hold police accountable is part of what we need. Um, I also want to, you know, get back to what I was asked to, um, talk about by the Blue Lives Lives Collaborative. Um, if we extend a hate crimes protection to Chicago police with the, um, ordinance 4878, we give more power to the police to deflect the accountability. Um, and we need assurance. Uh, we're asking for assurance that ordinance 4878 will not be introduced, and that instead, um, the city will refocus energy on really examining real, um, methods of accountability such as CPAC. Um, thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen.
Uh, we have friends, Lucas, and Alice Streeter.
Alize Streeter.
Alize, let's hear it. Okay, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is LaFons Lucas for West Side Health Story, and I'm a youth mentor. It seemed like me and my peers, we got the same idea towards the police, just like we can't trust them and stuff like that, but it's like, it was a broken trust that we get stopped for no reason, we didn't stop. It, we get stopped for walking with bags and walking with dreads, stuff like that, and it, it always seemed like we don't have a voice, and like we, we would be like, the police, the police, they can do whatever they want, they, you know, because they the police. Cause we see detectives hop out of cars and beat up our home, beat up our, and we don't know what to say. We, we ignorant to, to some of the laws, so we, so we don't know what to, to tell the police to, to be against them, and we, when we do speak against them, it's like we'll get attacked or, you know, get, get hit up, get put on ground, something like that. So we really don't go against the police. So we gotta just break that, that chain. And it's like, now it's coming to Chicago with the killings of teens, battered police, and I never thought that I would see like that coming to Chicago. We always said like, the police gonna be the police, but they know not to do that in Chicago because they know how it is. But it happened in Chicago, and they took one of my fellow friends that I went to high school with, and it was like, what, yo, you were there? And it was like, nobody from the community said nothing, stood up against the police because they murdered a 16-year-old. He was 16, not 19. So when I, when I was 13, he was 10. So I, I knew him since, he was a, a shorty, and I'm still a shorty. That's how I look at it. And when I seen him, I was up on homeless, I seen the police cars, but it was like a random stop. We all go through random stops. I guess he wasn't as humble, or, or as humble as, as, as me or, or somebody else to, to not go against that officer. And I guess the officer got to attacking him, and he, he tried to run for his life, and he got killed. So it's, it's bad that stuff, stuff like that happen. We see, see stuff like that and just shrug it off and be like, well, we in Chicago, we see that every day. Well, I just see this opportunity to, you know, try to speak out against stuff like that, and try to break that chain, or, you know, if I was not saying.
Uh, Lucy Streeter and then Paula Rodrick.
Hello, my name is Alize Streeter, and I come from the West Side Health Story, and I'm, I'm just working there. I want to speak upon the Blue Lives Matter ordinance that protects the police against, uh, against, that protects the police against hate crimes, and I wanna, I don't understand at all. Like, I don't understand why we need to give the police protection against it ever, ever. They have these other, that, so what can we really do? What can we really do to hurt them or to call them on? But if they had the power, I guess if they had the whole government, the entire city behind them. So do we really need the Blue Lives Matter ordinance? Like, we don't. It's basically like putting paper bar now and trying to sign us up anymore and letting the police on. So I just believe in the Blue Lives Matter ordinance. I believe that we should pay more attention to the civilians that are being brutalized.
That's right. Thank you, uh, Paula Rodrick.
I'm Paula Rodrick. I'm an attorney. I, I've worked for the city, I-
Excuse me, one sec, one sec. Uh, I just wanna get the next person. All right, now, Michael Rabbit. Okay, so I just saw that.
Can you hear me? Okay. I've worked for the city, I've lived here for over 30 years. I support CPAC, um, for an elected police board. Y'all have that ordinance in front of you, it was introduced on July 20th. It's a little bit interesting that on the police accountability hearings, um, um, petition you have here, you don't mention that we already have a proposal of that CPAC. Um, you know, when I was walking in, when I was walking in, there were some, uh, young African-Americans walking in with me, and we were looking at the school going like, what a beautiful school. This is how every school should look. Well, you know what? Every neighborhood should be safe. Everyone has a right to expect safety in their own neighborhoods. But to keep your community safe, if you're afraid to call the police, you can't do that. That's a failure of the police. And that's a failure of the city of Chicago, and that's a failure of the Aldermen who have the control, the right to enforce and enact, uh, CPAC. Uh, we have a right to expect every citizen, black, white, brown, yellow, no matter what race, what religion, to be treated with respect. We have that right. But if we don't demand police accountability, we don't get that from the police department. We need prompt action when police fall down on the jobs. And I, I worked for the city, I really do believe, my grandfather was a police officer. I believe in law enforcement, but I also know there's good police, and they know how to do their job, but when they fall down on the job, there has to be accountability. Because if there's no accountability, no matter what job you have, you will never correct your behavior. So I say also no to the new inspector general. Why do we need another inspector general? We've got an inspector general. What we need is an elected police board. We need to stop arresting protesters. I'm not gonna, everybody's heard about the Blue Lives Collaborative woman who spoke, she was so powerful. Blue Lives Matters? Really? There's an ordinance and it protects police already, and that's enforced, and it's used every single day. But we need to protect our protesters who just, I think, I don't even know how many got arrested today when they were protesting. That's not a crime. They're speaking out, they're exercising their First Amendment rights, and we're treating them like criminals, especially black, brown youth, uh, being treated like criminals, for speaking out, for helping, call attention to what the problem is. So I say no to stop treating these police to use as militarized policing. We don't need a higher police budget. We don't need more money in the police budget. We need more money in our communities to deal with our homelessness, with our food problem, with our job problem, with our education problem. We need more. Right, right, we need mention. So stop the Blue Lives Matters ordinance. You have the right to rescind that. And so finally, that young man who spoke, I'm here speaking for him because I'm older. I've got a job. You know what? As an adult, I have to say, we need to protect our young people because if they're feeling so threatened, then as adults, we have a responsibility to speak up, to be their voice. We let the, we fell down on the job, we're asking people to step up now to CPAC. We're asking our Aldermen, join the Aldermen that have already introduced that ordinance and, and sign up for CPAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, we have a member, Michael Rabbit, next, is your name, is it, Bonnie Johnson?
My name is Michael Rabbit, from the organization Showing Out for Racial Justice, also in solidarity with the Blue Lives Light Collaborative. I'm here to strongly endorse the prior testimony of Nick Cuba and other members of the Blue Lives Light Collaborative. This Blue Lives Matter Ordinance must be condemned and must be rescinded immediately.
It only undermines police and-
It only undermines police accountability, it does not strengthen it. The status quo is unacceptable, we must have police accountability now.
Yes.
Johnny Johnson, and then Frank Patton. All right, we'll start first, Frank Patton.
Your name is Sister Miller? Evening, alderman. Excuse my back. You know, let me just remind you about what this whole process is about, and how it got started. It got started with the brutal sister's murder of a child named Laquan McDonough. Had it not been for the death of that child, they would not be having a hearing here, and the city wouldn't be in an uproar like it is. Ron and Manny would still be acting like a monkey, just like a little cop going around the shadow. So we're here because of that. And what that reveals to us more than anything else that has happened in the last fifty years in this town, is that it is serious abuse of power. The mayor abused his power by suppressing evidence in the murder case for four hundred days. The city council abused their power by signing off a four million dollar hush money to the victim. That's why we're here. Now what happens when you abuse power, and you're in power, based on the trust of the people? What happens is, the people have a right to recall you.
That's right.
The people have a right to change things. And we're saying we have an inalienable democratic right to demand CPAC. We're not asking for CPAC, we're demanding CPAC. Because that's our democratic right. That is our democratic right. Who do you think you are? Who do you guys think you are? Dictators? No. We gonna show you who you are. Get some more men and women, just like the rest of us, and you can be taken down. And we gonna take you down. Because we're gonna have CPAC. You can ignore some of this little piece of paper, which is what you've done, you can act like you don't hear what we say, you can bring out your experts, your experts who've never stood in a protest with us, who've never done anything to fight for justice in this town, but they know all about justice. They're experts. They've never lost a child, nobody in their family's ever been murdered, they've never been beaten by the police or forced to be in prison, but they're experts. No, we're the experts, because all that's been happening is us. And you better listen up, because it's the experts that's coming to get justice. No, it's these experts, us, that's coming to get justice. Better listen up. After this, there's gonna be one more hearing about the expert that's coming up on Wednesday. Then after that, on September the twenty-first, the mayor is gonna bring his package, I'm closing it up. The mayor's gonna bring his package, and he's gonna say, "We had this process, now let's pass my package." Okay? And we're gonna say, "Hell no, it's not your package, it's CPAC." So next time we meet, next time we meet this time, it's gonna be down in City Hall, and we ain't gonna be a few people like this here. We gonna close it down.
Could you tell them to advertise the next meeting, because we didn't know about the next meeting, so advertise the next meeting, the city should... Yeah, I'm interested in my comment, I've already read that before we broke. Josh Mills, after David Polanek.
Hi, thanks for this opportunity, I'd like to compliment North Grand High School on the air conditioning system. It works. I'm not aligned with any organization or any movement, I don't know all the terminology, I'm new to this, I'm a bit naive. I don't have a whole lot of answers. I'm just a citizen who watches the news and knows my neighborhood, and I've realized something must change. There must be major change. Where there are systemic injustices, there must be systemic solutions. This will take courage by the city council, and we're willing to end the status quo. If the Office of Public Safety Inspector General is created, this office must have teeth. The Public Safety Inspector General must have the ability to fully investigate accusations, complaints, and pursue prosecution of officers that commit wrongdoing, misconduct, and criminal actions. This inspector general must be a totally separate office. But I'm learning there are other options that sound a little bit better. There is huge mistrust of institutions and of government in our society. There must be total transparency and strong accountability to regain trust. Officials that refuse to be accountable to the citizens must not be allowed to serve. Elected officials that are unwilling to create that transparency and accountability should not be reelected. I expected this room to be full tonight. I'm not involved in a room, and I thought, "Man, I didn't mean this."
They never did.
I expected this to be full tonight. So if our elected leaders will not institute true change, then we must not be elected.
Josh Mills, and then Christina Tendilia.
Good evening, I'm a member of J-Corps, which is the organizing body of the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs. I really wanna thank the aldermen and alderwomen for being here tonight, thank you very much, and I really hope that you're hearing and really taking into account what everyone sits here tonight, not just going through motions, because there's a lot of people who have worked on this issue for a long time in this room, and really struggled about it, so I hope that you're really hearing that. And I'll make it really short, the people's voice on this issue is clear, it's CPAC. People want CPAC, so you can put some other replacement for IPR, it can be placed for five years, ten years, fifteen years, and then we're gonna be right back here, figuring out what's next, and it's CPAC. People are not gonna stop fighting for CPAC till we have it. So that's really it. CPAC is the answer that people are gonna keep fighting for. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
After this, the D.R., who cares?
Aisha Trust Miller.
Okay. Can I get that in there? Go ahead, Mr. D.
Okay. Hi, good evening, my name is Christina Tendilia, and I'm here representing Asian Americans Advancing Justice Chicago, and I'm also here standing with the Blue Lives, the Blue Lives Lie Collaborative. And I just wanna say that Advancing Justice also demands that the ordinance number forty-eight seventy-eight, is also known as the Blue Lives Matter ordinance, be rescinded. I'm also here in support of CPAC as well. And also here to remind our city officials of the, what the gentleman earlier spoke about Home and Square, also to support the folks who are currently occupying that space, where there is state sanctioned torture of people in this city by CPD, mostly black and brown, young people, right, people who are experiencing homelessness. And so, for me, working at an Asian American organization, we know that this issue disproportionately affects black communities. However, as an immigrant organization, and also communities of color, we're not immune to police violence that's been happening in this city as well. And so, this bill has been framed as a way to promote safety, but we know that this is just going to extend the already abusive power of the CPD. For us at Advancing Justice, we joined this fight of police accountability when someone from our community was verbally and physically abused. Two years ago, her name was Jessica Gianking Plecheck. There was video, audio, of the twelve police officers who were involved in this verbal and racially charged abuse. We, for over a year and a half, we engaged with IPR, we engaged with the mayor's office, we engaged with the superintendent at the time, and there was no accountability, there was a few days of suspension, right? So for us, we know that there is currently no path for, currently no path for accountability for law enforcement who commit a hate crime. And so, this ordinance that is being proposed would deepen these pre-existing protections from accountability as public servants. So for us, we're disgusted with this ordinance, and that it's being used to further criminalize and intimidate communities. Thank you. So I'm gonna end with saying that police do not make us safer. Let me say that again, police do not make us safer. For a city that's spending forty percent on police, we have to look at root causes, and we need you, city officials, to look at those root causes, thinking about mental health, education, parks, youth programs, so on and so forth. So for the folks on stage here, if you wanna respect and protect the interests of the community that we elected to serve, we ask that you rescind and condemn forty-eight seventy-eight, support CPAC, thank you.
Hello, my name is Aisha Trust Miller, I am a Chicago native, I'm from both the north and south side of Chicago.
Right now, I am representing the Seventh Ward, Laker Homes, my homes. I'm standing in solidarity with Blue Lives Matter, CPAC, BYP One Hundred, and Brown People for Black Power. The brave Blue Lives Matters in itself, like the gentleman said, is a slap in the face for people of color in our city, especially for those of us like me who have experienced, witnessed, and fought or fight against the historical and contemporary acts of racist and fatal violence and oppression imposed by crooked-ass cops, sustained by the silence of brothers and sisters in their blue game, and upheld by racist policies like this one introduced by crooked-ass politicians who don't give a care about black lives at all. The proposed ordinance, Blue Lives Matters, is our city's official's response to black organizers and allies' mass non-vital demonstrations and righteous anger against police brutality? How racist is that? There isn't, no, there ain't no response from youth and folks like you in power when our children and our people are murdered, injured, and traumatized by CPD. Not a whisper. There are no laws in place to protect us, but the laws that's in place to protect civil servants, are they not already suffice? I know what ain't suffice, the harassment I experienced because I live in low-income hoods. I'm afraid to walk down the street with my keys and cellphone in hand, because they might think she got a gun, she black. The eight and a half years stolen from my husband due to crooked-ass cops and crooked public attorneys, that's not suffice. What ain't suffice is the assassination of Fred Hampton and other sisters and brothers fighting to change and empower the people, past and present. The persecutions of activists like Malcolm London and J. Long Green. All right? What ain't suffice is the death of Rakeel Boyd, Laquan McDonough, Quintonio, and many more, that's not suffice. Where, yes ma'am. Where is our protection and justice? What that ordinance say? I've witnessed shootings, police altercations, there's been incidents where the violence was driven by my, into my home. I don't call the cops, they just gonna come and escalate the situation. I come out and I talk to the people myself, I don't, I don't trust you. So, my taxpaying dollars pay for my oppression. I will defend myself by any and every means necessary against whoever, even a bully in a blue uniform with a gun.
Alderman, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Service Employees International Union, Local Number Seventy-Three, and Healthcare Illinois and Indiana. I also wanna just begin by saying, expressing my personal solidarity and support for the Blue Lives Lie Collaborative. In April of twenty fifteen, that is too loud, in April of twenty fifteen, my local, I'm a member of Local Seventy-Three, we adopted a resolution in support of an elected civilian police accountability council. It was adopted unanimously by our one-hundred-person executive board, it was adopted unanimously by a membership meeting here in Chicago with almost two hundred members present. At that time, there had been, in the, since January of two thousand nine, we put this in the resolution, there'd been over ninety people killed by the Chicago Police Department, over two hundred and fifty people shot in that same period of time, ninety-five percent of them are black and Latino. And what we recognized is that, you know, every day as trade unionists, we fight for our members, and yet many of our members go home at night, and in their communities, their lives are in danger from the very police officers that we pay who are supposed to be providing protection, supposed to be providing safety. And so, after deliberation on this, our union came to the conclusion that the only serious remedy for the problem of police violence and crimes is for the people of Chicago to have the power and the authority, as is laid out in the CPAC legislation, to choose the superintendent of police, to write, rewrite the rulebook, for example, on when the use of force, or to discharge their weapon is allowed, and to discipline officers who violate the rights of the people. And I wanna tell you that this last Saturday, we had a meeting with about a hundred of our members with our new leadership, you may have read about our local now having an administrator from Washington DC, but he's a very famous administrator, Eliseo Medina, he was the right hand of Cesar Chavez back in the nineteen seventies and eighties, and now he's with our union. And he, and we discussed this, and over the next thirty days, SEIU is going to be contacting every member of the city council to make it clear that our twenty-nine thousand members in Local Seventy-Three, and the ninety-one thousand members in HCII, and Tom Ballenoff Swears, the local one's gonna be in on this within a couple of weeks as well. We're gonna bring this message to all of y'all, that we, along with the teachers' union and their thirty thousand members, and thousands and thousands of other union activists and members in this city, this is what we stand for. We want an elected civilian police accountability council. Thank you.
Hi, my name is LaCrisia Briss. Can you hear me now? Is this better? Step back? This is better? Okay. So first of all, I wanna say thank you to whoever brought these meetings about, and I also wanna thank the aldermen who have been coming out to these meetings, because I understand that all of the aldermen have been attending these meetings, so I do thank you all who have been participating. I also thank you, John Arena, for taking up my proposal for a summer... for taking up my proposal for a summary about these hearings. Thank you for that. I also want to thank all the people in the alliance and people, members of the Blue Lives Matter Collective and the organizations who have come out today to speak against the Blue Lives Matter bill. And shout out to the young person who lost his friend. I also lost my uncle to police violence a couple of years ago. So I speak from experience, just like many of the other people here. This is not a game for us. We are tired of losing our loved ones. We are tired of the police torturing and harassing us. And we have been vocal on this issue. We've been vocal with Rakeel Boyd, with Ronnie Mann, with Pierre Laurier, with Betty Jones, and others. But you haven't. Like I said, I do thank you for this meeting, but we need more than a meeting. We need tangible action steps. The first step, after this meeting, I would like for all of the aldermen to go check your emails. We sent out, the Blue Lives Collective sent out an email asking for a clear response on where you stand on the ordinance, the Blue Lives Matter ordinance. We want to know, are you in support and in solidarity with the people? Or are you supporting Alderman Ed Burke and his cronies who want to, you know, further enable police to torture and harass people? Secondly, we need you to support CPAC. I know a lot of the aldermen up here, well, not here today, but some aldermen expressed some issues with the ordinance. You know, come meet with us again. Come bring suggestions to the table. But it's clear that this is what the people is demanding. We're not gonna take any other ordinance, okay? We want CPAC. So it's y'all's time to work with us. It's y'all's time to come from behind those tables and really take action on this issue, okay? Because the people have already been vocal. And we really need to see what you guys are gonna do next because as the person or people have been saying, we're not playing this next coming election, you know? The people who have been taking those steps, we will give praise where praise is due. But for those of you who haven't, Robores, you know, we really need you to step up. We need you to rescind this ordinance, okay? Thank you.
Hi. So my name is Aaron Delutry. I want to thank y'all, the aldermen, for, you know, having this hearing. And I want to thank everybody that came out to it. And I guess I just want to say, so I've been reading through this sheet in the policies that you intend to have in the city council. And to me, it's a sense of deja vu. IPRA was created because there was a problem with police violence and police crime. And it was not effective. It's not effective. It was not effective. It never did its job. And now, you've realized this, and you're going to create the Public Safety Inspector General. To me, this is, it's like a repetition. It seems like, you know, in a sense, it's... With all due respect, and I think you're doing this out of a genuine sense that you want to, like, fix things, but I don't think it's going to. I think you're just rearranging, you know, deck chairs on the Titanic. So basically, why not, instead of having these, you know, oversight things that don't really have any power, why not go for CPAC? Give the people the power, the ability to actually, you know, make the police accountable? I mean, almost everybody who spoke today has asked for CPAC. Why not give it a chance? It could actually, it could actually fix the problem. Thank you.
Eldon Grossman. Mr. Grossman, if you're still here, come on up. And Kevin Lee here? No? Uh, Mr. Grossman? Find your way, okay? And after him is Mark Capler. Mark Capler here?
I'm going to make this short and sweet. I'm representing Veterans for Peace, one of many, many organizations, peace organizations, social justice organizations, church organizations, the many, many organizations who have endorsed and are supporting CPAC. There's a reason. Because it's democratic. And we're not gonna have, you know, the mayor, you know, we don't want oversight from above because then you're figuring into, like, the political structure. And everybody is, you know, a lot of it is just defending police. A lot of these organisms, a lot of these structures that have been set up have police in them. CPAC does not want the police policing the police. That's something we do not want. But the main point I wanted to make is we have such broad and deep support. There are so many organizations that are supporting it. We're gonna keep fighting for it until we get it. And you know it's in city council. And, you know, we're just not gonna give up. We're gonna fight until we get it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bart Capler. I'm with Northside Action for Justice. We are one of the organizations in solidarity with the Blue Lives Collaborative. And we also 100% endorse CPAC. Let me just say this. This is the second hearing I've been to. And I've not heard one person stand up and support this proposal. Your elected officials, I don't need to give you a civics lesson, actually. The way the council is structured, you have the power, not the mayor. We found that out when Harold Washington was the mayor. And Ed Burke, along with his crony partner, Ed Brudoliak, held the people of the city hostage for three years until we were able to get a majority in the council. I know all you guys know that, right? So you have the power. We have the power, really. We're the ones that have the power to people, but you have the power. We have a situation now. I'm a local school counselor in Uptown, at Uplift Community High School. We're facing a $300 million shortfall in our education budget, despite the pronouncements of Faris Claypool, who was appointed by an appointed school board. And we know where that gets us. Over the last several years, we have paid out, us, the people of the city, including you, about half a billion dollars on these police settlement suits. If we had that money, then we would not have the shortfall, one. Two is, if we had an elected civilian police accountability council, these police that are perpetrating these hate crimes in our community would no longer be on the force. And then, we wouldn't have to worry about paying out half a billion dollars in settlements. I just, I cannot understand why there would be any support for this proposal on the part of any alderman. If these hearings have any meaning at all and if the voices of the people have any meaning at all, then, one, you will make sure that the Blue Lives ordinance never sees the light of day and rescind it. And two, you'll make sure that on September 21st, one, the schools are fully funded because you will support the TIF ordinance to take that money out of these bogus TIFs and put it into the schools. And two, you will support CPAC so the people of the city can get about the business of building communities where our young people can live their lives in safety and can develop to their full potential. And our seniors can go into their golden years with the kind of safety and protection and support of communities that they need. Thank you.
Gregory Lucero, and then Eric Hunter.
Hi, my name is Gregory Lucero. I just moved to the great city of Chicago last Friday. And I'm happy to be here. And I'm glad to be able to attend this meeting. And I mean no disrespect to the underpaid, overworked facility staff of the high schools and the teachers. But I find this incredibly disappointing. Literally, people's voices could not be heard. And I understand that none of you do what I do for a living, like audio. But the fact of the matter is, somebody should have made sure that the mics work. And I'm not saying it's you, but you know who's responsible for setting up these events. And it's ridiculous that very fact... Just by happenstance, I moved Friday. What would this meeting have looked like if we literally could not hear anything? I think there's a lot of static going on in this room, and it ain't just the audio. So the other thing is, I know about CPAC. I didn't learn about CPAC from the wonderful people handing out flyers at the front of the school. I come from Utah, where I helped build Utah Against Police Brutality. And we don't call it CPAC. We call it Community Control of the Police. But this is an idea that is spreading. And Chicago is the beating heart of it. So I would encourage all of you to look at your constituencies, look at what people want, look at what people are saying to you, and realize it is not simply the eyes of Chicago that are on you. It is the eyes of the country and the eyes of the world. And you gotta keep that in mind. And I just love hearing people talk. And I've already waxed a little too verbose. But let me say this. You said at the start, and I appreciate the sentiment, that when the timer goes off, you wouldn't cut anybody's mic. But just remember, it's us, the people, who can cut your mic, not you who cut ours. So I'm gonna go back to work.
Eric Hadger. I'm here on behalf of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist Political Repression and in solidarity with all of our colleagues, Blue Lives Collective, and everybody else that's come out here to be with CPAC and everything else. And I just want to say that we've seen a lot of eye rolls over the past year from a lot of people in your position when it comes to the efficacy or possibility of CPAC. And we've heard that it's not best practices about 1,000 times. But I think we all know what that looks like to us is that when is democracy not a best practice in America? Well, it's only when the system is so rotten that you can't possibly conceive of handing it over to the people like the best job solving. So we're demanding democratic control because radical democracy always will require a serious fight against racism in this country. And it will be a difficult process, but we're not gonna let up until it comes into effect. And we know that this new inspector general, all the other propositions are purely designed so that no one can tell accountable. Because without democratic popular control, there's no impetus for any sort of inspector to actually put these people away. There's no one above them that would ever want that in government except the people below. So once again, demanding support for CPAC. And we're gonna keep doing it, no matter how many hearings you guys have or how many other phony new review boards and oversight bodies you come up with. We'll be back out here when it happens again. So thank you.
My name is Edward Ward. And I'm here representing myself, as well as my community. And I think that it does no justice to, first of all, say that the Blue Lives Matter ordinance is one of the dumbest things created since the recent struggle. I think that when you have a police force that comes into our communities, constantly brutalizes our people, constantly terrorizes our children, constantly kills our brothers and sisters and siblings, and then expects for an ordinance to come and say their lives matter, but when the Black Lives Matter is brought forward, you have all types of excuses to say why black lives don't matter. That is a problem. What must happen is this. I think that the community must really understand, and I think a large majority of this community understands, that when you have elected officials in office, these are not people who we have to listen to or people that we adhere to. These are people that listen and adhere to us. Your power comes from us. What you do must represent what we want. And if you're not doing the job we call you to do, then your asses need to be out of office. Simple, plain and simple. You must go. We're sitting here, and a bunch of... First of all, I support CPAC, right? And so, a bunch of us here are saying that we support CPAC. And if there is still not anything in place that says CPAC is going to be instituted, guess what? Whatever trash you have other than CPAC must go. Because what we will continue to do is demand other things, regardless of what you say. You say you want other things. We say we want CPAC. If we don't get CPAC, you get the trash and put it back in the trash can. We get the elected officials, and we take their asses back to where they come from. And we continue to fight for our communities and continue to say, you know what? This is our city. We are the people. And we will continue to stand and rise up regardless of what you have to say. You don't create the laws. We do. And if we don't get the laws that we want in place, you gotta go. Plain and simple. You gotta go. And you're supported by a mayor, by a mayor who kills our people and then covers it up by a police force that lies and says they are afraid of the communities they are sent and called to serve. Now, if you're in these communities and you're called to serve and you're afraid at the same time, chances are, you need to get your scary asses out of these communities and let somebody who's not afraid of the people and don't see the people as a threat but as pure human beings to control these communities so that in that way, we can be able to move forward. That's why we need the community to control the police and not crooked-ass elected officials.
Good evening. I will admit to you off the top, I don't have anything to say that you haven't already heard many, many times over tonight and across this past month. My first recommendation is to withdraw the Blue Lives Matter ordinance, ordinance 4878. I understand that none of you all are sponsors on that ordinance. But you know just as well as we do that your colleagues who are on this very joint committee of the budget and government operations and the Public Safety Committee are. And yet, as to my knowledge, as I've been to all of these hearings all this past month, with the exception of Cochran, none of them have had the decency to show their face at these hearings, to look their constituents in the eye, and explain to them why it is they think that it makes sense for them to spend city council time and energy into passing a hate crimes expansion ordinance. None of, I have not seen any of them here. So you need to go back. You need to talk to them. You need to talk to Burke. You need to talk to Cochran. You need to make this happen, seriously. Number two, I understand that there are questions about the CPAC ordinance as it stands now, the language and all of that. The way that you can take initiative and take leadership into working through and be a solution is to sponsor the CPAC ordinance with eight of your colleagues that have already done so. I understand that there are questions about, you know, police districts and is that, you know, something that we can use as an electoral district and the compliance of that? The majority of you all in the city council, let's keep it 100, the majority of you all are lawyers or have passed the bar at some point in your career. You know, you can make this happen. It's a matter of stepping up and having the political will and the courage to do so. And my last point is, you know, around this question of a Public Safety Inspector General. That sounds real cute, but in material terms, we know that a lot of you all, just earlier this year, voted against the inspector general having power to audit your own offices as city councilman. It's silly at this point. It's confusing why you're throwing up this idea that an inspector general office, throwing more money into that, throwing more resources into that, has anything to do with keeping people safe, your constituents safe, period. This is the reality, and these are the stakes of this moment. As many people... As many people have already said before, we've already told you what we want. It's a question, and we're not going to stop. Regardless of what happens next month at the city hall meeting, or what happens in October, or what happens next automatic election cycle, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We're just reminding you to do what you said you were sworn to do, that's all.
The last thing, I had two names that I called, and they didn't respond, I'm going to call it one more time, because they have stepped out of the room. One was Kevin Reed, and then Bobby Johnson, neither of those folks were here on the speakers, but he's speaking, come on out. Mr. Blaymore?
Thank you, sir. To the empty seats, the spirit of the ancestors is still here. I'm appalled to rush out with on an issue that's very important, police brutality. But killers, killers mainly in the black community, those bloody souls, showing here in this Hispanic predominant community, that they didn't come out, or whatever, and the black people should have been here. They didn't have to, from Inglewood, Rosewood, Alston area, all over the city, they should be just packing up these here, so it's something inherently wrong with them for not showing up. I do not believe in reinventing the wheel. You all are elected officials, some other group is advocating for another set of elected officials. Make these people accountable that's already been elected by you. Make them accountable. Did you know that black life must matter to black people? Black love, black family values, black community? And go back to old school, that old vow, teaches black people how to live, and family values. So now, you, the police are shooting you? Sometime the enemy, look in the mirror, and you'll see yourself. If you don't have jobs, contracts, goods and services, it is something inherently wrong with what you're doing. You got 18 elected officials? You voted for the mayor, now you against the mayor. You had daily here, 20-something years, how many blacks got killed on the daily? A nightmare. Even when you had Harold Washington, black, they were killing black people, killing black people. We had many black superintendents still killing black people. Black people? You have to change your mindset. God has given you everything you need, all you have to do is know how to use it. So you're going to use it by bringing in another elected group? You didn't even elect the right ones here with your 18 aldermen, they're supposed to do that. They're supposed to do that. Get them out, get them out. So the bail says, be seated. The ancestors say, I appreciate you, George Blaymore, and what are you using there? Your sisters say, empty seats with hundreds of thousands of black people, are they outraged? Look at these seats, where are the Hispanics here? This is our problem, they didn't even show up. Is something wrong with the system? May God bless, and in return, may you bless somebody else. And God is good, all the tab, look in the mirror. Sometime, I got the wrong bus, I lay the wrong bus driver, that's why I'm late. I'm a stupid old man, didn't know how to get here, I'm aware no part, aware no part. Don't get mad at the bus driver, this is George Blaymore.
My thoughts for being here are, thank everyone for taking the speech and providing their input on this important issue, and I'll turn it over to the chair of the co-organization.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other people that want to speak? If not, the time is 8:27, and I get motion to adjourn. Move by Alderman, please, in all of the arena. To adjourn, all clear? Opposed, please, adjourn.